Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The hour has arrived. Tonight, we have three public hearings. At this time, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Jackson. Counselor Brown. Counselor Starnes. Counselor Cables. Counselor Stritchick. Counselor Boone.
Here.
Thank you. The first public hearing relates to the authorization of the mayor to have various weeded lots abated per Title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama 1975 is amended. Is there anyone present that would like to speak in favor of this resolution? Is there anyone present that would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Hearing none, I declare this public hearing closed on this matter. Second public hearing is to grant a retail liquor Class 1 license to 2650 LLC doing business as Adrian's Bar. Is there anyone present that would like to speak in favor of this resolution? Yes, sir. Please come up and you would slowly state your name and address for the clerks.
Okay. My name is Derry Edwards. I'll be speaking for Adrian's Bar. We'd like to open a full-service bar here on 121 West Main Street. It's the Targa Creek side of Main Street here. Operating hours will be from Monday through Thursday, four to eleven, and Friday and Saturday, we have different operating hours, three to twelve then, and on Saturday, eleven to one. Have any questions for me? I'll look right at you.
I'm Adrian Edwards.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right. It's okay. We just wanted to let y'all know that we would like to have a, it's more of a lounge. It's for professionals to come, socialize after work type thing, have a drink with friends, stuff like that. No loud music or anything like that. Or on Saturdays or something, you can come watch a game, ballgames of some sort, just to socialize and enjoy.
Any councilors have any questions of the Edwards? Can you remind me of the operation hours again, please?
Yes. Mondays, we'll be up in four to eleven. Tuesdays will be a close day for us. Wednesday and Thursday have those same operating hours. Friday, we'll go from three to one, and Saturday, eleven to one. Close on Sundays as well.
You would have a seat and we'll continue. Is there anyone present that would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Hearing none, I declare the public hearing closed on this matter. Matter number three is to grant a retail liquor license to Blazin' Wings Incorporated doing business as Buffalo Wild Wings. Is there anyone present that would like to speak in favor of granting this resolution? If you would please state your name.
Yes, sir.
And address for the clerk.
Absolutely. My name is Ted, T-E-D, last name is Beukee, B-E-U-K-E. I'm the general manager, will be the general manager. It's 2475 Cobb's Ford Road. Our hours of operation will be on Sunday from 11:00 in the morning until 12:00 at night. Monday through Thursday will be 11:00 in the morning till 1:00 a.m., and Friday and Saturday will be 11:00 a.m. till 2:00 a.m. We're very excited about being in the community. We've got some great things, very community-connected. I don't know if you've been in, if you'd like to walk in there sometime this week. I've got a little tribute jersey for Kevin Turner. It's his jersey, it's actually, it's his jersey from Alabama. There's a picture of him when he played in Prattville, and there's also a jersey when he played with the Senior Bowl. And there's also a Kevin Turner booth that has a little QR code that when you scan it, it goes to his foundation. So actually, Kevin comes up and talks to you, "Hi, I'm Kevin Turner," so it's very cool. Like I said, we're very sports-oriented, as you're aware of, Wings Beer Sports. We're just very excited about being in the community. As I said, with the sales and revenue that we will bring and the opportunity and hopefully the traffic we'll bring into the city, we hope to drive sales and everything else toward
Council, have any questions of Mr. Beukee?
I know I should have brought samples. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, I do. When are you scheduled to open?
December 5th, Monday.
Thanks, sir.
We have a chamber meeting, a chamber ribbon cutting at 9:30, and then we will have a Wings for a Year overnight. I will have security for that, and a porta potty where people will spend the night, and the first hundred will get Wings for a Year. So, it's pretty cool. A lot of fun. I've worked for the company for 12 years. I don't know how many countless openings I've done, and I'm very excited about being here in Prattville.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone present that would like to speak against this resolution? Hearing none, this matter is closed. We will move into our regular agenda. At this time, I would invite you to stand for our pledge of allegiance and our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow with me? Father, we pause to thank you for the gift of this day, for life, health, and strength. We're mindful of those that have lost loved ones. We're mindful of those that are dealing with the challenging issues of life. We ask for your hand of comfort and a gift of peace to be with each of them. We pray for all citizens that are providing service to their fellow man, whether local or abroad, whether military or public service. We pray for their efforts to be successful and for their safe return. We pray for our nation, for our state, and our community, and all of those that have an influence on history. We are appreciative of the blessings Prattville has received. We ask for rain to help replenish the earth and our lakes and streams. We also ask that as we conduct the business of our city, that our actions be pleasing to you. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Jackson. Counselor Brown. Counselor Starnes. Counselor Cables. Counselor Stritchick. Counselor Boone.
Here.
Thank you. The character trait for the month is gratefulness, demonstrating appreciation to others for what I have and how they have helped me. At this time, we call for approval of the minutes of our public hearing and City Council meeting of November the 1st and the organizational meeting of November the 7th.
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of adopting this motion signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, my like sign, motion carried. At this point, we will have comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda. Is there anyone that would like to speak on any item on our agenda? Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, do you have a report?
Let's start off by saying, you know, this is a good-looking group up here. Congratulations, Mr. President, this pro temp, councilors, each and every one of you. A little more than a week ago, you got sworn in. Now you're ready to get sworn out, I hope. You know, it's, you guys are the best-looking council I've seen up here this whole quadrennium, since this is the first meeting of this quadrennium. And, you know, I'm certain Mr. Albert has seen of and heard of the show 2020, but never would have thought that our quadrennium would have started in 2016 and shall end in 2020. But do you remember that show, Mr. Albert? You don't? Okay. Moving right on along. If I might have a point of privilege then, first one of the new year?
Yes, sir, you may.
I'd like to call Jeremy, I mean Doug Mosley up to the.
[laughing]
Well, he was up here before, and I guess be one of your last meetings with us, delivering some very good positive information, and where we did provide you with the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. We felt like it was, with all your hard work, you deserved it mounted and framed. Looks that way, we knew you wouldn't waltz it up and put it in the can. So it, but it's been a pleasure, it's been an honor, and as I said last time, you have grown, you've helped us grow, so most certainly, you appreciate your friendship and your loyalty. Get him around the table. You want a point of privilege?
I'll take one, I'll take one after.
Afterward? Okay, well, good, good. Well, great. You know, it's, Doug Mosley has done as well, and I know that him and his family will do well in the future, and wish him Godspeed. You know, recently, we had our annual Veterans Day event, which was one of the best in recent history, the most, I think, I have seen quite some time. But we appreciate the American Legion Post 122 and VFW Post 1349 for their hard work. I also want to thank all the city employees who assisted in making the event a success. Thank you, you made us all look very good. Thank you to Public Safety, Public Works, Parks and Recs, and the mayor's staff. Everything was pulled together on that. But, you know, our Christmas events are coming up soon. The Christmas tree lighting will be on November the 28th on Court Street adjacent to Heritage Park. The event begins at 5:30, and the lighting will take place at 7:00 p.m. Please come out and join us. I hear Santa will be making his presence known to all who attend. Our Christmas parade is December the 2nd, and the parade starts at the courthouse and ends at the stadium. It will begin at 7:00 p.m. We're happy to announce that our local spiritual leaders, our preachers, our pastors, will be our grand marshals for this great event. We're sending out invitations to that, so if you happen to see yours this coming Sunday, please ask them to look forward to that letter. But if they don't receive one accidentally, ask them, please, to get in touch with my office. Don't know if anybody here has noticed some of the Christmas decorations going on downtown. You know, one of the big ones, I think, besides our 30-foot Christmas tree, is what's going on on Bridge Street, which is also known as Cigarette Bridge itself. But there's a lot of things going on. It's looking a little bit like a covered bridge, so make certain you all come out, because I think things will be just, Parks and Recs and Urban Management, they're going to be kicking things up a notch this year, and we hope everybody will enjoy it. That, Mr. President, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does anyone on the council have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. This point, are there, hear from any report on council and special committees? Councilman Jackson? Councilman Brown?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Starnes?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Cables?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Stritchick?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Boone?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. At this point, we will have a report from our finance director.
You have your financial packet in front of you. The first sheet in the packet is the revenue report for the month of October. This report will look a little bit different this time than the rest of the year, especially for all you new folks. You'll see that in the first column is the activity for the month of October. You will notice that the second column, year-to-date, there's a lot of zeros in there. That's because a lot of the October revenue was earned in September, so for financial segment purposes, those get pulled back into the previous fiscal year. But you will see that for the month of October, we were up 6.59% overall on our revenue. The next sheet in the packet is the tax breakdown comparison for the month of October. That shows all of the different individual tax line items and how we fared for the month of October. You will see that we were up 6.64% just on the tax side, which equates to about $133,000 for the month of October. The next set of sheets in the packets is the expenses by department. We break those down in four categories in each department: salaries, benefits, operations, and capital outlay. Obviously, this is the first month in the fiscal year, so you won't see a whole lot of activity on there. The same basic thing applies on the salaries and benefits as on the revenue, because we have a salary accrual for our first payroll. Part of the payroll was accrued in the previous fiscal year, so it gets pulled back as well. The next sheet in the packet is the wastewater enterprise fund income statement. Same thing applies on all of these statements as well. You will see that on the revenue side, we're 0% through the year, because the entire revenue gets pulled back. And on the expense side, we're 8.33%, so everything's looking really good. Next sheet is the sanitation enterprise fund income statement. Same situation on this report. You will see revenue is coming in well, expenses staying low. The next sheet is the judicial special revenue fund. This fund is actually different. The revenue does not get pulled back, because it's earned when it's received. However, the salaries and benefits do get pulled back for that first payroll. The next sheet in the packet is the bank account balances report, showing that the balance of all city accounts at the end of October 2016 was $19,286,370.98. And the last sheet in the packet shows the balance at the end of October 2016 for all city debt was $38,178,383.19.
Thank you. Does any counselor have questions? Mr. Mosley? May be the last opportunity you have. The floor is yours.
I just want to thank the council again. I know, thanks to everyone last meeting, but I want to thank you again for this opportunity. I walked in here six years ago, ready for a new adventure. It's time for me to start another new adventure. We've gone through a lot. It's been a bumpy road, but I can honestly say that I feel confident that the city's on the right path, due to the leadership and all the hard work of everyone. I want to thank my two work moms, and I want to thank my work dads in the back of the room, and all the friendships I've gained through this job. I didn't walk in here expecting what I was going to get. I couldn't have paid for the experience that I learned and the hard lessons I learned in this job. But I just want to thank you and all of you, and the citizens, for giving me this opportunity.
We appreciate your efforts, and thank you for everything you've done for the city. We have an opportunity for a consent agenda this evening. The first item for consideration is a resolution to authorize the mayor to have various weeded lots abated per Title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama 1975 is amended. Resolution number two, to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance, order their abatement, and set a public hearing per Title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama 1975 is amended. Number three, a resolution to surplus 12 wheel-in light bars from the police department. Resolution number four, set a public hearing to grant a retail beer on or off-premise license and a retail table wine on or off-premise to Peachtree Hospitality Management LLC doing business as Homes to Suites. Resolution number five, to appoint Counselor Richard Cables to the planning commission. Resolution number six, to authorize the mayor to submit an application to the National League of Cities for CHAMP's grant funding assistance of up to $40,000 to fight childhood hunger with no local match funds required. Chair will entertain a motion to place these six items on a consent agenda.
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion concerning these items? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to create a consent agenda signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, my like sign, motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda we just authorized.
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, my like sign, motion carried. Consent agenda is adopted. Now, we will move into our regular agenda. We have an ordinance to amend City of Prattville Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 3, Division 1, Generally, Section 2-2. Counselor Brown, will you introduce this resolution, this ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville that City Code, Chapter 2, Article 3, Division 1, Generally, Section 2 through 21 is hereby amended to read as follows. Standing committees of council established. Within the city council, there shall be the standing committees established by the city council consisting each of three members, in addition to such other committees the council may direct. One, finance personnel, planning, economic development. Two, fire and information technology. Three, maintenance, vehicles, facilities, and lots. Four, parks and recreation. Five, police and judicial. Six, sanitation. Seven, streets drainage and lights. Eight, urban management and cemetery. Nine, wastewater and stormwater. And ten, liaisons, Heritage Center, Historic Prattville Redevelopment Authority. So moved, Mr. President.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a second. In order for this matter to come before us this evening, this ordinance, we will have to suspend the rules. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Do we have a motion to suspend? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of suspending the rule signify by raising your right hand. Is unanimous, the rules have been suspended, and the ordinance is properly before us. Is there any discussion on this ordinance? All those in favor of adoption signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, my like sign, motion carried. Item number two is a resolution to grant a lounge retail liquor Class 1 license to 2650 LLC doing business as Adrian's Bar. Counselor Starnes, will you introduce this?
Yes, sir. Whereas 2650 LLC doing business as Adrian's Bar applied for lounge retail liquor Class 1 license for business to be located at 121 West Main Street, Prattville, Alabama 36067. And whereas a public hearing was set by Resolution Book 2016-8, page 191, held November 15, 2016 at 6:00 p.m., and at such time and place, all persons who desired an opportunity to be heard in favor of or in opposition to such resolution, now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby approves the issuance of a lounge retail liquor Class 1 license for business to be located at 121 West Main Street, Prattville, Alabama 36067, to 2650 LLC doing business as Adrian's Bar. So moved, Mr. President.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on this resolution? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, my like sign, motion carried. Resolution number three, to grant a restaurant retail liquor license to Blazin' Wings Incorporated doing business as Buffalo Wild Wings. Counselor Starnes, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas Blazin' Wings Incorporated doing business as Buffalo Wild Wings has applied for a restaurant retail liquor license for a business to be located at 2475 Cobb's Ford Road, Prattville, Alabama 36066, which will be a restaurant. And whereas a public hearing was set by Resolution Book 2016-8, page 190, and held November 15, 2016 at 6:00 p.m., and that at such time and place, all persons who desired had an opportunity to be heard in favor of or in opposition to such resolution, now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby approves the issuance of retail restaurant retail liquor license for the business to be located at 2475 Cobb's Ford Road, Prattville, Alabama 36066, to Blazin' Wings Incorporated doing business as Buffalo Wild Wings. So moved, Mr. President.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on this matter? All those in favor of this resolution signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, my like sign, motion carries. Resolution number four, to appoint the city clerk and city treasurer, finance director for the 2016-2020 quadrennium. Counselor Boone, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville makes the appointments for the city clerk and the city treasurer, finance director in accordance with Section 1143.3 of the Code of Alabama 1975 is amended. And whereas Section 1143.3 states, "The city clerk and the city treasurer shall hold office until the next general election and until their successors are elected and qualified." Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby appoints Kathy Dickerson to the position of city clerk for a term of four years, as required by the Code of Alabama 1975 is amended, at pay grade 411-05. And be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby appoints Daniel F. Oakley to the position of city treasurer, finance director for a term of four years, as required by the Code of Alabama 1975 is amended, at pay grade 414-01. Be it further resolved that the salaries for said positions are approved in accordance with the pay plans adopted by the City of Prattville, Prattville City Council. So moved, Mr. Pressman.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on this resolution? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, my like sign, motion carried. Resolution number five, to release funds for the purchase of one John Deere 644K four-wheel-drive loader from Warrior Tractor through NJPA Purchasing Cooperative for the Engineering Department at a cost of $268,977.61. Counselor Brown, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas there is need for one John Deere 644K four-wheel-drive loader in the City of Prattville Engineering Department. And whereas said equipment is available through NJPA Purchasing Cooperative Contract Number 032515-JDC from Warrior Tractor, cost of $268,977.61. And whereas said loader is a budgeted expense for the Engineering Department. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that funds in the amount of $268,977.61 for said loader are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Warrior Tractor or John Deere, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2017 budget line item Engineering Department slash Capital Outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this matter? All those in favor of this resolution signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, my like sign, motion carried. Resolution number six, to release funds for the purchase of one 2017 utility interceptor SUV vehicle, bid number 016-006 from Long Lewis of the River Region Incorporated for the Finance Department, at a cost not to exceed $27,839. Counselor Jackson, will you introduce this resolution? this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville Finance Department has a need for a 2017 utility interceptor SUV vehicle. And whereas bid number 016-006 was left for one or more 2016 or newer police utility interceptor SUV vehicles, and Long Lewis of the River Region Incorporated was the lowest responsible bidder with a cost of $27,839 per vehicle. And whereas bid number 016-006 was originally awarded by the City Council in Resolution Book 2016, page 77, on April 19, 2016. And whereas the cost per vehicle awarded in bid number 016-006 shall be honored throughout the model year, and whereas said vehicle is budgeted expense for the Finance Department. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that funds in an amount not to exceed $27,839 for the purchase of said vehicle are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Long Lewis of the River Region Incorporated. And funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2017 budget line item Finance Department slash Capital Outlay. So move, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of this motion signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. Motion carried. Resolution number seven, to release funds for the purchase of one 2017 utility interceptor SUV vehicle, bid through number 016-006 from Long Lewis of the River Region Incorporated for the Planning Department, at a cost not to exceed $27,839. Counselor Stritchitt, will you introduce this, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville Planning Department has a need for a 2017 utility interceptor SUV vehicle. And whereas bid number 06, excuse me, 016-006 was left for one or more 2016 or newer police utility interceptor SUV vehicles, and Long Lewis of the River Region was the lowest responsible bidder with a cost of $27,839 per vehicle. And whereas bid number 016-006 was originally awarded by the City Council in Resolution Book 2016, page 077, on April 19, 2016. And whereas the cost per vehicle awarded in bid number 016-006 shall be honored throughout the model year, and whereas said vehicle is a budgeted expense for the Planning Department. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville, the funds in an amount not to exceed $27,839 for the purchase of said vehicle are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Long Lewis of the River Region Incorporated. And funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal 2017 budget line item Planning Department Capital Outlay. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion on this resolution? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. Motion carries. Resolution number eight, to release funds for the purchase of one 2017 utility interceptor SUV vehicle through state contract number T191A-K7B from Stivers Ford for the Police Department at a cost not to exceed $26,331. Counselor Starnes, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville Police Department has a need for a 2017 utility interceptor SUV vehicle. And whereas said vehicle is available through state contract T191A-K7B from Stivers Ford at a cost of $26,331. Whereas said vehicle is budgeted expense for the Police Department. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that funds in an amount not to exceed $26,331 for the purchase of said vehicle are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Stivers Ford, and funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2017 budget line item Federal Drug Prosecute. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of this resolution signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. Motion carried. Resolution number nine, to release funds to purchase one 2017 Chevrolet Tahoe commercial four-wheel-drive vehicle through state contract T191L from Donahue Chevrolet for the Fire Department at a cost of $33,515. Counselor Stritchitt, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville Fire Department has a need for one 2017 Chevrolet Tahoe commercial four-wheel-drive vehicle. And whereas said vehicle is available through state contract T191L, master agreement MA999160000004, line 07042760000, from Donahue Chevrolet at a cost of $33,515. And whereas said vehicle is budgeted expense for the Fire Department. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that funds in the amount of $33,515 are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Donahue Chevrolet for said vehicle, and said funds are approved and appropriated from FYI 2017 budget line item Police Department slash Capital Outlay. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion on this matter? All those in favor of the resolution signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. Motion carried. Resolution number 10, to really, release funds for the purchase of 1,098 95-gallon garbage cans from Schaefer Systems Incorporated through the HGAC Purchasing Cooperative for the Sanitation Department at a cost not to exceed $54,039. Counselor Cables, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas there is a need for additional 95-gallon garbage cans in the City of Prattville Sanitation Department. And whereas said garbage cans with the City of Prattville logo are available through HGAC Purchasing Cooperative Contract Number GC01-03 from Schaefer Systems Incorporated at a cost of $47.50 per 95-gallon garbage can, plus $1,884 in freight costs. And whereas said garbage cans are a budgeted expense for the Sanitation Department. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that funds in an amount not to exceed $54,039 are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Schaefer Systems Incorporated for the purchase of said garbage cans, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2017 budget line item Sanitation Department Enterprise Fund slash Operating Supplies. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion on this matter?
Yes, sir. Dale, so we're getting some at Highland Ridge, right? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor of the resolution, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed by a like sign. The motion carries. This concludes our agenda for the evening. This time, we will take comments from persons present. Hearing none. Mayor, do you have any closing comments?
Just want to wish everybody a great Thanksgiving. It's just right around the corner from us. And you know, there's no better way to have a holiday when you visit and you have time to think about your faith, family, and friends. So thank you all for serving up here. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jackson, any closing comments?
No, sir.
Counselor Brown?
No, sir.
Counselor Starnes?
No, sir.
Counselor Cables?
No, sir.
Counselor Stritchitt?
No, sir.
Counselor Boone?
No, sir.
I express appreciation to all city employees for their positive approach in making Prattville the preferred community. I too hope you have a very fulfilling Thanksgiving. Our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday evening, December 7, 2016, 6:00 PM in these chambers. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carried.